The board should have received minutes of the October 16th and October 30th meeting. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Approval of the agenda. We should have a copy in front of you. Other changes or corrections to the agenda?
Make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. We have a consultation with attorney, certified 2016 special assessments. We have a copy of those. The changes that were made. And you must have found out that there were changes to be made?
Yeah. Other than the changes that Greg had brought up toward the end of the meeting with regard to expansion drive, those individuals were contacted, they are aware of those changes. They were told that we were meeting again tonight to discuss it. And then Greg did update the railroad property to include the square footage. Basically, it was 700,000 square feet, right Greg? And that was added, so it reduced, you can see, just a portion of it here, you can see that it reduced people's property taxes anywhere from a dollar or less. I think the highest one was like 130 some dollars. And it actually reduced somebody's, and the railroad increased by 3,000.
So Greg, just question for you, is it fair to assume that the reduction on everybody's down there, that's what applied then to the railroad?
Correct.
And you said that amount, it's how much?
The railroad increased. Find it here quick.
I'm just looking at the sun down on the bottom of my scientific notation on my spreadsheet.
Railroad was increased by $3,258.94.
Can we re-communicate that to the railroad, or they'll just get that?
Surprise, like everybody else.
And so we do need a motion to approve these?
Yes.
And we can send those on to the county?
To the county, yes. This is a 20-year assessment, that two and a half percent.
Make a motion, we accept the modified numbers reflecting the movement of some of the common area assessments and furniture assessments to the railroad as well.
We have a motion and a second, is any discussion? Roll call?
Keller. Aye. Stern. Aye. Wolf.
Aye. Motion carried. Now we're on to 2018 street project.
Sure staff tonight, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we just wanted to bring you guys up to date with what we have, what we've been finding, some of what our thoughts are on the project. We did get the final televised report back from PACE. We also got the final geotech report back. So with geotech, just kind of as an overview, one of the things that stands out to us is that they recommend against going with the fly ash cement stabilization that we talked about at the special meeting. So, I mean, we still think it could work, but they're the experts in that regard, so we're just gonna take their recommendation and go reconstruct where it's needed and utilize some of the city stockpile of crushed concrete. And then with the televising, we did find a number of areas concerned in that report. And what we wanted to do tonight was to kind of go through some of those areas with you and point out, you know, what we think can be done. The good news, I think, is that for the most part, most of the sanitary, I think, could probably just be lined. And as far as a repair, there will be some spot repairs needed, but for the most part, basically, we can get away with aligning other. But because of what we saw in those, what we're thinking is that on any of the streets that we're proposing a mill in over anywhere where we're gonna be putting in new asphalt, that we probably shouldn't get any lines under those streets looked at. Just because we're gonna put down new pavement, if there's any question. So we contacted PACE. Just looking at, based on our numbers, looking at the amount of sanitary sewer under those particular streets. I think, based on their unit prices, it should be, if I'm recalling somewhere, like between $20,000 and $12,000 to televise those additional streets. You know, I forwarded that information on the morning, I think he shared it with you. So it did talk to PACE. In terms of schedule, they're kind of booked up for the first half of this month, but they said that they could get here for that towards the end of the month. So I just said, pencil us in for that. We'll wait and see how, you know, the meeting tonight goes, if you wanna proceed with that or not. But that's kind of where that stands right now.
So then, we just pretty much did the older part of town, right, now?
Yeah, we did the lines anywhere that we were looking at, basically a reconstruct of the streets. Because since we're gonna be doing so much work in those areas, we figured, okay, those are prime can. I mean, if it's a chip seal, we weren't gonna look at it because the asphalt's already there. But we started out with the areas where, you know, we're gonna do full-depth mill or reconstruct and looked at those. And because of what's come back, we're thinking that maybe anywhere that we're gonna be putting asphalt down, even if it's two inches, maybe we ought to take a look at those as well.
So then, there was also like areas up in, I guess, I guess, I guess in the North Star Two as well, right? That were, that were suspected?
North Star, which one's down here? What do you mean?
Yeah.
Not the other, just here.
Oh, yeah, I did see them there.
Okay.
Yeah. We did have some down there.
And then, how much of this sewer line's gonna have to be re, re, I guess, lined then?
Well, Luke Arnold is here tonight with us. He's our lead design engineer. And so we've got some exhibits here, we wanted to kind of show you guys and go through, like I said, what we found and what we think can be done, and to get your input on that. So, I don't know, maybe Luke could answer that one.
Okay. Thanks, Mark. The, basically what we found in most areas is that the issues are pretty minor. There's things like roots, there's a few holes in the pipes, there's some cracking, a few fractures in the pipe. So, all in all, not a real big deal. There are a few areas where we did find some pretty significant issues. Some of it is related to taps that are kind of sticking out into the pipes that would be just a little too difficult to be able to line through cleanly. That'll probably have to be opened up. We did find a couple areas where the pipes, the conditions were such that they're collapsing or it actually even started to collapse. There's even one of them was PVC pipe that really kind of surprised us, but it's like first 15 foot out of a manhole that just is completely squished. And that has to be fixed, there's no question there. The work that has to be done is just a handful of areas. The work that we would probably suggest we take care of, as long as we're doing it, as long as we're gonna be putting new pavement down, is a few more areas, and I believe one of the, there's one, you know, it's got a bunch of little blue dots on it. That one. That kind of gives you a little bit of a picture of the locations where we were finding problems of some sort that we think would be advantageous for the city to fix now before we put new pavement up. As far as, these are spot repairs, yeah. The question really for the city is, do you want us to proceed with looking at what areas might benefit from doing a lining project versus which ones won't? I got a little bit of a kind of gut feel for that, but I don't know, we've looked at it terribly closely because we didn't feel any of it was an emergency situation. You can wait, if you like. Really, the question in my mind is, do you want us to look at it right now? Or do you wanna just wait and put together a citywide comprehensive plan on how to review and address the sewer system?
I know one of our motivations here is to try to do a bunch in a short amount of time. Get us to a point where we can ride it for quite a while before we have to consider going back to our cities for any additional repair type work. So I guess, my gut would tell me that we should take a look at it now and then see overall, when it comes to lining and stuff like that, what overall impact it would have on the budget of the project in its entirety.
Okay. The, what we're likely to find is that there's gonna be some pipes that would benefit from lining sooner. Other ones that probably are gonna be fine for fairly significant part of, you know, a decade, maybe more, before you really, you would really expect that they were gonna deteriorate further to the point where it's gonna really be much of an issue. So, you're gonna have a little bit of a mix in there. But for us to really kind of know what areas to look at, obviously, at the very least, we would suggest doing this additional televising for the areas that we're gonna be doing pavement repairs. The other question is, do you want us to look at the rest of the system? And without videotaping the rest of the system, obviously. And the videotaping of the rest of the system, I think, was originally conceived of trying to get it done fairly quickly. But it's a significant cost. And, again, you can kind of guess that you're gonna end up with similar results of what you're finding in the areas that you haven't done it. So, yeah, it's really just kind of a case of, do we videotape the entire system to know absolutely every stitch of work that we might suggest? Or do we take a cue from the work we've done so far, only worry about the areas that are most likely to have the issues? Address those, if they need spot repairs, we'll fix them if it's under a new pavement. If it's under an area that just been repaved recently or is under a chip seal, maybe we don't worry about that in the short term. Maybe we videotape it to make sure that there isn't something that has to be addressed immediately. But if not, if we can push that off till later. But these are the decisions that's for you to make.
When you say a significant, have you guys crunched the numbers as to what that delta would be in cost?
Citywide?
Yeah.
Actually, we got a bid on it. It's steep. It was, I think the lowest was like 250,000 for the city. Which, I don't know, in my mind, I kind of see that as separate, you know? I mean, I think, I would think, at this point in time, we would just worry about sewer that's under the streets that we're gonna be impacting. And that was that nine to 12,000 dollar number that we talked about. You know, I mean, you can chase your tail forever if you wanted to and look for problems, but, you know, I think if we at least got those televised where we're doing work, at least I just think it's a cleaner, more, it becomes a project instead of letting this thing spiral.
Well, I guess, talking with water department, I guess they didn't feel like it was, it was, I guess, like necessary, you know, they do all the PVC mains in town. Their past experience was that we had a lot of much problem.
Sure.
And I think the real problem is that clay tile line, you know, that we have. Right, maybe, 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 you know, if you wanna do the whole, you know, like older part of town, all the clay tiles, you know, just to get it.
That makes some sense.
Yeah, how much of what you did this time was in fact PVC versus clay? You mentioned a couple of spots where you had.
We did do some PVC, and by and large, we saw what we would have expected with the PVC pipe, which is that there wasn't any real problems. We did find one exception that is really, in some cases, it's kind of a textbook case of what happens when somebody didn't compact around a manhole properly. But, you know, those are dependent, that, yeah, stuff happens, you know?
So if we considered what Casey's recommending there, do we know approximately what impact that would be on your nine to 12,000 dollar range?
I couldn't give you, I mean, we have to see, you know, look at the numbers and see how much clay tile there actually is versus, you know?
We've got, we've got clear inventory of that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we could have that tomorrow morning, you know, have it tomorrow, but I can't tell you what it is now.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
You know, because it is, you know, it's, like, some of the clay tile line, as of expected, you know, the recent years, so those might all need to be.
Right.
Yeah, and we've got, we've got the most recent videotapes. And we'll look at those too when we're looking at what might, because I do know that there is some, some steel pipe right out here that needs to be addressed. And we would include that in the project.
And even this last round of televising, I mean, there's more steel pipe out there, so we kind of thought it was isolated. Hope that was the one and only, but it's.
So the soonest that they could get back out here would be, you said, in the second, second part of this month here?
They said towards the end of the month, you know, and she would try and get it done sooner, but just the way the schedule looks, that was kind of what she could promise.
Do you wanna ask for a revised number for our next meeting? And would that give us, would they be able to pencil us in? And then we would get.
Well, they're penciled in now.
Okay.
Just as a placeholder.
Right. I'm guessing there's maybe not a lot of people that are shooting pipes this time of the year, or am I wrong?
Well, what she said, what she told me at least, was that in order to get this la, you know, this last video project done, she put some other projects off to get us this information. So now she has to fall back and pick up those ones. But she did, I mean, you know, they've been good to work with so far. And she said, if they can get here sooner, they will.
What, just a quick question, do we reconsider a little bit my way of looking at it? So we looked at, we're thinking eight to, what you said, eight to 12, right?
Yeah.
You know, somewhere between eight and 12. Do you have a top, a dollar value in mind that you wouldn't want us to exceed? And what we could do is start to pick the areas that seem to make the most sense within the older part of town, up to a certain dollar value, and do approximately that much with, and move forward with that. Reason that I'd suggest something like that is because if we wait another two weeks, without having authorization to get us to basically solidify that schedule, it's just gonna slide the start point that back a little bit farther.
If we know we're looking right now at somewhere between eight and 12 to do everything, we could probably give authorization tonight just directing them to look at the clay line, the clay type?
Well, the eight to 12 is for any pipe that is underneath something we're going to pay.
I understand.
And so that's that much. The question is, do you want us to look at the entire old section of town, including areas that we're not planning on doing a paving?
Yeah, so then I guess, would this be on the specials then?
Yeah, so far, all of these costs are going into there. So depending on what we find, it may reduce some of the parts of the project because of these costs, you know?
Well, I mean, I mean, if we said, maybe like 40 grand or something, you know, go up to that, I mean, I mean, I know that, that amount probably is gonna do the whole, whole part of town, but I mean.
It'll make a pretty good dent in the building.
Yeah. Do you have any, how much clay is in your, or? Yeah, I don't have any.
Yeah. That's what I've been sitting here trying to think of, and I didn't think of look at it this way. But we're probably only catching with the additional work, or maybe only catching 25, 30% of the old section of town. I'm really guessing a little on that. With a number of like, you know, double that, you know, maybe we're getting somewhere around half of it. We might be able to kind of cherry pick, based on some of the other stuff that we're finding. We do have ages of the pipe, so what we can do is just kind of start with the oldest pipe and work our way up until we run to the end of our budget. Get that much done, and that way, we at least have a look at the oldest part of the system.
And we can crunch some of those numbers and get them back tomorrow, tomorrow. Give you an idea of how much of the city, you know, can be covered for X amount of dollars.
Well, if we pursue setting that cap tonight, and then we get those numbers back and we find out that it's another 15 grand or something like that, like you said, you can get them going if they come in here earlier on that portion of it. And then we would probably be afforded time.
In two weeks, you're gonna need adjustments to make on our work pretty easily.
Yeah. Okay.
I move that we spend up to $40,000 on the PACE inspection.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor?
Can I ask a question? When you say the 40, is that above and beyond what we're saying already with the eight to 12? Or is that combined?
Okay. And that clearly would be looking like we discussed on, at the clay with prioritization, going oldest, oldest first. I'll second that.
There is a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call?
Stern. Aye.
Keller. Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
And then two, there are some drainage issues that we looked at. And so, kind of wanted to run through some of those with you and, again, get your input. Feedback is important for all of that, so, on how to fix that and stuff. So this one here, seems like Fourth Street. Fourth Avenue, I'm sorry. This wasn't one of the ones, I don't believe, that we talked about at our special meeting. But when our guys were out doing the street survey, the day they were out, they had noticed that there was two or 300 feet of standing water against the curb. Is that anything, or you guys, have you experienced any issues over there in terms of standing water, or?
There's not that I can.
That area doesn't stand out from, as we call.
That's by Nav, correct?
No.
No, it's on the other side. Top percentage.
Percentage.
You know, there's a lot of areas in town where we got water that won't go through.
Okay, but that's not been an issue for the city?
Well, fraud.
There is, I don't know, it went off. Already by Smith. You know, like in the church. Yeah, about 50 yards, probably less than that. I notice when you go to sleep, you hit that, just because of the water, mud goes up there. Years, a few years back, some of those. Pretended to PD, and it rains again.
Well, as it turns out, this is probably the toughest not to crack. So if the city's not having an issue with it, then I don't think we're gonna suggest anything. Because that whole area is really flat. And I think, Paul, if you go to the next slide after this, this kind of, this is a profile view of that area. And you can see with the red and blue dots there, kind of shows the high points, low points around there. And it wouldn't be a real easy fix. I mean, we can do some things to improve it, but if it's not a problem for the city, then I think, like I said, we're just kind of, we saw this when we were out there and said this, you know, potentially is a problem. Do you see it as such one, or?
It's not a real big deal, but, you know, people live there and have complaints.
Okay.
Probably about half a block from that old church, that's Norman Keller's.
I think basically what you've got, especially on the eastern curbs, and that, that half to three quarters of the block, there isn't, it kind of comes up and down a little bit from one end of it to the other. It was about two inches or the difference in elevation.
It's really flat.
There's, without providing some way for the water to get out, doing something about it, all you might accomplish is just moving the puddles around.
So then, I guess, what's the ideas, I guess, on?
Well. If it was a real problem, and you really wanted to get it out of there, it would be storm sewer. And that would be pricey. So, I don't think the money you'd spend on a storm sewer, you're gonna get the value out of that. I don't think it's that. So short of that, I mean, we can do some mudjacking at the curb and try and align some of the grades a little bit better. I don't know, do we?
Some of those are small enough, like I said. I'm afraid that there's a reasonable likelihood, shall we say, that all you're gonna do is move the puddle around. That you might not do. We could have a couple of spots where we could take some curb out that is currently a little high, that's blocking some flow. There are other spots where we could adjust a bit. When you, when you're mudjacking, the amount that you can control it isn't, it's not real, real precise. And we're talking about trying to take half an inch out of something, or three quarters of an inch or something. Yeah, anything like that.
So probably, right now, we just leave it as is, if it's gonna be that costly. We can do that one.
Okay. Yeah, I was.
You have ideas on dollars associated with each?
You have ideas on dollars associated with each of these? I'm sorry? Do you have dollars associated with each of these?
Uh, well, not with that one, because like it's, it could...
Okay.
The, the storm sewer, I think we got a real quick estimate, what was it? Sixty, eighty thousand dollars? And honestly, we didn't see it as that big a problem, so we wanted to check before we really spent too much time worrying about it.
Okay.
This is, okay, so that's the Tenth Street, right where it goes from asphalt to gravel. This is up by the, this is up kind of by the, is there, is there tennis courts in there?
No, it was, used to be.
Oh, okay.
TRB park.
TRB park, right? Historically.
Yeah.
But this area, there's, currently, there's a couple of grade issues in that, kind of cement line drainage swell that's holding water in that area. Pretty minor repairs needed to fix that. You know, we don't have dollar values on this, but it's, in the grand scheme of things, I mean, we're talking about a few thousand to repair some of that, and it's pretty minor. So I would, this one, we, we suggest going ahead and getting that so that it gets the water off pavement in the street, at least a bit. Farther down, I think it'll still probably a little bit in that ditch, but I don't, we don't care about that because it's not hurting roads.
So the actual repair then is what?
That would just be this area right in here. It's basically replacing some curving gutter here. And then that first, how was it, forty feet or something? Or, or forty feet of the gutter, just to get, there are a couple of high points and everything's kind of...
So there is already some gutter there, just be reconstructing that, and like it says here, match what continues on.
Yep, and just be putting some new stuff in, because there's a couple of high spots in there that're holding water causing it to sit in the pavement a little bit, and we just wanted to clean that up.
And so that would just be included next year's?
That would be part of the project. At this point, we, our kind of assumption, but given the opportunity to veto it, is to just go ahead and do that there. This is at the end of the highway drive, right where the entrance to the apartment building complex is at. Uh, it's Eighth Streets, is it? Eighth Avenue, yeah, yeah, the Eighth Avenue, so this is on the north side of the highway, on that turnpike. This location, right now, we've noticed that water comes from the east, comes to the west, gets to that apron, like where it searches from asphalt to concrete to go into the, uh, into the, into the apartment complex there, and it just kind of stops and sits. The water can't get out, it's a common road that holds it, there's no way for the water to drain out of there, so it just kind of sits. Another question, how much of an issue is the water sitting in that area, is it something you want us to address? This one will be a little bit easier to address. Rebuild, put a, put a valley gutter in there, we could consider even putting a valley gutter east and west on this, across the driveway going into Rough Rider Collective.
So this, this is kind of like the repair that we did, the last, last go around up there. Did you realign that Mike Chatten there? Was that a, was...
Some of those were made in Highway Two Hundred projects.
Yeah, because we had talked with DOT, and they, they made some mention about realigning at one point.
Yeah. And that was redone when they extended, shared these paths up to the toll roads.
Okay.
The one, the one issue that this does have is getting the water under that bike path. We're thinking the easiest way to do this basically is trench grain, trench grain with solid, um, so there'd be a little bit of, this, this looks like somebody's walking across and riding across, it'd just be solid metal in it for that foot and a half, like a foot, foot and a half wide or something like that. So there wouldn't be any issues with somebody getting stroller wheels caught in it or...
Roller blades.
That kind of thing, roller blades, that kind of thing, it shouldn't be an issue for that. We would, we, there's no reason to need it for drainage, so we just put a solid cover on the thing. But it allows the water to come under the bike path and get to the ditch. This is one of those that if there's not a problem there, then do we need to address anything?
I mean, the water must, must, I guess, run on the grass right now, right? You just like stay there between the...
I would expect that what's happening is that there's probably several inches of water that, if you have a really heavy rain, for example, that just sits there until it evaporates. That's what I think probably happens. Is it a concern, is it a question, you know, issue? That's what we're asking. Is it something worth looking at, is it something worth fixing, addressing? We can improve the situation, provide drainage in there if you want. But it's not something that, in my mind, qualifies as, well, you really should do this, this is just a, do you want it or not? Totally up to the city.
So then on the cost of this one, it'd be probably five, six thousand, something like that?
That's probably, I'm sure, I'm trying to remember what we had looked at, the valley gutter like that. We're probably looking at somewhere in the ballpark of ten grand, ten, four grand, something like that. Depending on how extensive we get of the whole thing, might look a little more than that. We could take the opportunity actually to do a little bit of realignment work. You can't see it quite as clearly in this, but this path comes right behind the curb up to here, and then this, there's an offset to start on the path from there, so you're crossing, technically crossing the street on a diagonal. We could use it as an excuse to come back here and line that up so it comes straight across. And to do that, additional work would be another two thousand.
I, I kind of feel like using the money where we know that there's problems. I don't know that I've experienced anything there.
I never had any complaints about that, and we know houses adjacent to...
Right. I didn't know about cutting, cutting grass in the ditch area there, that's been a spot where we've had to wait and...
So...
Probably not.
Yeah, one more, watch out. Okay. Okay, this intersection at Divide and Highway Twenty-Seven, this is one you asked us to look at specifically. And after taking a look at things, I think our feeling is that there was an inlet that was put in on top of one of those culverts, one of those three culverts, at some point in the past on the south side. Looking at the area that ultimately drains to that, it goes a fair distance west and north. A lot of that development up there eventually ends up at this point. So what we're kind of thinking is, let's do the same thing that was done on the south side, but do it on the north side, which is, I think, may have been actually the bigger problem area anyway. And put coal, put three inlets on the north side, one on each of those culverts. And then put another inlet similar to what was done right here, where they dropped one into the, into the curb and then just stucked it out into the ditch. Do that same thing up here. The reason is that the water right now comes from the north, and there was, I'm trying to remember how many feet.
There's a couple...
There were several hundred feet that, you know, kind of comes from the end of where the curving gutter is at, down this, to get to this point. So there's gonna be a heavy rainstorm, there's gonna be a fair amount of water that would have to turn this corner or shoot across, probably shoots across now, and a lot of it probably goes right past that. What we would like to do, put an inlet there to catch most of it. Regrade everything so what was left would come around the corner, make this a low point in that, that area. So the water coming this way ends up in those, anything that gets by coming this way, the whole thing all just drains that point and gets into those culverts and keeps on going.
Because what happens right now is on the, the north side of the street there, it comes down, and then it goes across the whole intersection down to the, to the...
Comes, comes to here, and everything just kind of sits and cools and swirls, and then finally eventually gets this way. Yeah.
Sometimes gets there.
Yeah. What we would do is regrade to lower the road just enough that these are low points, everything will go to those, never gets to this intersection, we'd probably take that valley gutter out. We've got to coordinate a little bit with the county on that, but regrade that, so everything drains a lot better in the intersection. Adding those, adding those three or four inlets is pretty, pretty nominal for, and then a little bit of regrade. We're gonna have a pretty drastic improvement on the way that whole intersection works and drains and rides and everything else, so...
This one I know gets, it, it becomes problematic in the winter time when it, when we do get a melt and a freeze, and a melt and a freeze, and that's...
If, if there's ice, the water's promoting.
It stinks when you, when you don't feel yourself stopping and you see somebody coming from the north.
With the, with the regrading that we would be doing, if there is ice, it's gonna be around those inlets, it's gonna be back a little farther from the intersection. So the intersection itself, where people are really, that last spot, that they're gonna either slot, stop there or slide out into the intersection, if they slide a little, it's gonna be farther enough back and they can still get stopped in time. So I think we can make that a dramatically better...
The inlet that's up on the, the north side there, is that, would that be considered county?
That's not absolutely certain.
Because was it, was it the county that did this one here? Because this one's relatively new, and I don't remember who did that, if it was us or the county.
Sure that was the county.
I'm not positive.
I don't think we've done it in the past.
That's relatively new.
I'm pretty sure that's county.
Okay. I haven't seen as much problem coming up from the north there as I have with, is this, this whole street drains down through the east?
Yeah, that, that's where there's, most of that water certainly coming that way. We could, we could not do that piece, but that, having that there is gonna eliminate having to make that water, make that right-hand turn to get into the...
Sure.
Which helps if you can take the edge off, have less of, half the way.
I'm comfortable with it, I just don't know if we have jurisdiction or if it's coming.
Yeah, we, we acknowledge and understand that we have to check with the county on it.
Yeah.
We, we have a calling to them, so...
Yeah, they'll probably say, hey, if you're willing to put the bill, knock yourself off.
So this is something that you're not opposed to, that you would look at? And having that looked at, okay?
Yeah. Fourth Avenue to Seventh Street, Fourth Avenue to Seventh Street. This is just a little bit down the road from the high school, just Eastern High School on Seventh. It's gonna be right in this area, right here. Now, my understanding, I think it's, there's a, I don't know if it's a park or a campground.
This is the largest park.
Okay. Now, the first question is, is that, do I understand the problem correctly? As I was, as it was explained to me, the problem is that there's, there's actually another pipe that comes out of here, comes through the system, dumps the water into this area, which is a bunch of cattails and tends to build up. And that this ices up, blocking that culvert in the winter, and causing water to build up and causing things to build up in that low spot, and Third Street...
It's only about that deep.
Yeah, yeah, it's really shallow, and so that, that's the problem though, is I just want to make sure I'm understanding that properly. And you're thinking that the problem is that that, once that culvert exposes, that that water comes out of the pipe and everything just freezes up solid, you can't get water out of it. What we can do is we can actually come back to this manhole here and run a new pipe over that inlet. And none of that water ends up in here. Make just that one change. And because it's not, it's, the pipe is actually out in, on the boulevard, it, it's just the cost of the pipe, it's actually really an expensive fix. I was quite frankly a little stunned when I realized we could do that. But for a couple hundred feet of storm sewer pipe, we might be able to significantly reduce the chances of all of that freezing in that area. It will probably still freeze up in the park, but I'm just saying that's not a big deal. It's...
Freeze up the pearls, it's the east side.
Yeah. So with that change, I think we can probably help the situation without really doing too much. Now, Third Street is probably one of the worst-conditioned streets, we're planning on rebuilding that all anyway. We might look at changing some grades a little bit to try to, try to do something slightly different in there, but we'll leave the low points where they're at, and leave the rest of the system where it's at, because it's, it works other than the fact that it ices up. Hopefully this would fix things, because what will happen is this water would then come all the way over, come out, and actually wouldn't daylight to clear down here. It's not a big change, but I think it could have some certain beneficial impact.
So right now, on the existing pipe, how, how is? How I guess like deep is that pipe? Probably like that deep, huh? Okay, so then, so then you would just leave it at that same elevation and then just extend it out?
I would just actually, instead of where the culvert comes out into that ditch, I'd actually just tape all the way over to, to pour that and connect it into the side of the existing inlet there. And then that way, that water just doesn't come into that area at all. The only thing that feeds, the only water that gets in there is just what kind of falls on the field and stuff around it. We cut down quite a bit of icing in that area, which probably isn't as big a deal. But hopefully, the fact that the water can flow all the way to the ditch and highway means that it won't ice up and freeze solid in, under the street there and cause the problems that you've got.
I was curious, I don't know, like last year, we'd make that area to, you know, to, I guess, and pile up all our snow and stuff that was off the streets, you know, and, you know, if...
If that's what you're doing, that's probably helping, that's probably caused, at least partially causing some backups in Third Street, with what we're doing, it won't affect that one bit. We can still do that, and the water that's coming off of Third Street isn't gonna end up in that pile, and it doesn't matter how deep you make it. So it won't have any detrimental impacts on, you mean, use that area for storm, storm storage.
I think that this is a project that I'm definitely more to do.
No, very expensive.
No.
Uh, it's really, really inexpensive. Really happy that we're able to, that it worked this way, so I think we can definitely have a positive impact there.
Okay. Do you want to do any to vote on all these changes, or just have them...
Just whether you want them to actually start to throw it in that, see what's...
Because we haven't voted on it, I don't...
No.
Yeah. Just walk them back up.
I don't know if we have to vote on this, or if we just verbalize direction to go after it, and then when you do get contact to vote.
Yeah, and we've been doing that, so...
So just to kind of summarize, the Fourth Avenue, we're not gonna do. The Tenth Street, that one, that was...
That was it, that was it.
Tenth Street, yeah.
What was that, Rough Tiger, is that my highway?
Rough Tiger, no. And then Seventh Street, between Third and Fourth, yes.
Yeah.
And then, and then Diva, or Diva, Diva. That was kind of more of, this is what we got in mind. Somebody else got a different thought, but since you already asked us.
Yeah.
And so then the other things is, so yeah, you brought up the issue with the, uh, fly ash, cement stabilization. At this point, we're, and we're planning on adding that road. We're just doing reconstruction using the materials you've already had stocked out. So.
Either, either way, we're saving money.
Yeah. So we'll do that role.
What's the reason why that they didn't think that the fly ash?
You know, we called them and asked them that question and it's really because they didn't have any experience with it. So they weren't comfortable in, you know, making that recommendation. We've told them, you know, we've seen it used and works fine in lots of places, but, but that's really what happened.
Well, I guess we, we know we've got a big pile of stuff available to us up there.
And that and the amount of cement fly ash that they were, their preliminary suggestion, how much we would need, was higher than what we had originally anticipated when we did those first, uh, those first estimates. And so knowing that, oh gee, if we need to use more. And it wasn't the dollar value because of the fact that you have materials, wasn't, it was kind of in that gray area already, that pushes it more into the gray.
Well, then I don't think there was any certainty that we had availability of fly ash either.
So with all of that, we're kind of figuring unless you tell us different, we're just going to go to the agreement start.
Do you have any questions?
No. Thank you for all the information.
Monty squeezing his head over there. All right. All righty. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go on to the Heritage Insurance Services Free or Reduced Call Rent. If you have that in front of you.
Tying that in with the, with the walk around or?
No, that was November 3rd. This is December 7th.
It's a separate thing.
Yeah.
So it's just a random night in it there.
Yep.
Provide access to it. Same to be in here.
Yep.
One of the wishes of the board.
Move to approve.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Stern.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. We're down to reports. Casey?
Well, we know this, like last meeting, they kind of talked a lot of old, like water plants. It's certainly not. You know, if we ever, ever did need the extra water, you know, I, I did this, talked to Dick and, um, he pretty much said that that's not a possibility. So.
Should we just have them museum inside the building?
Well, that's what it sounds, but, uh, I know, I guess like Mark was kind of actually working to it some, I think, and, uh.
Yeah, what, um, what we found was that, yeah, if you tried to restart the plant, that's going to be expensive. What may be a viable alternative though, considering, um, is to just use the wells that you have. And in the case of an emergency, when there, when there's no water, you can, you can run the well water on an emergency basis, um, you know, under the theory that bad water's better than no water. You know, you may have some, some boil orders or depending on what you want to do, but, um, you know, talking to Monty, I think, what, this is the first time in five years that you've really run into this situation. So, you know, again, when you're talking about how much money you'd want to sink into this, you know, the treatment plant's going to be, I mean, he, he, and you're saying Dick said it wouldn't even work. So.
And, and even on the wells too, I guess he said that's not an option either. It just starts to, you know, it's just to run off of, I guess, like well water. So.
Are they not operational?
The last time they ran, they were about ten, you know.
It's been five years since they've been running. Well, I mean, if you could look at doing some maintenance on them just to get them up and running. And then the thing with that is you have to exercise them like once a month, you know, and keep on running the order. But again, this is one time in the last five years. So it's, you know, how much money do you want to look after doing that?
Well, except this time, I guess, because, because I guess I leave it as be. Hopefully, hopefully it's never, 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 I guess, in that position. So, but, I mean, but if there is, you know, a need for it, I'm sure that we can escort it through to somewhere.
And it was a relatively quick fix, wasn't it? I mean, it was less than a day that they had.
I did have a call from Southwest Water saying that in, since 1995, when they first went online, they've never had more than a 12-hour time period when they weren't able to supply water through any, I mean, this is out of the equation. So the track rate is pretty good as far as making repairs.
Here we go. Dan?
I don't have anything at this time.
Okay. And I have nothing at this time. Uh, Buster?
Greg, we wanted to, maybe we want to talk a little time here. We just received our checklist inspection and we did receive our certificate of occupancy. Is that on final? It's pretty close. It's just a couple, yeah.
Haven't officially picked it up, but.
So what we're really waiting on now is final number for Williams Builders for expenses. So that we can actually put together our finances. So we know what to charge for rent. That's our number one concern besides getting occupants into that facility. So. Anything weird to add?
Other than the fact that the open house as well, we have a lot of people go through the facility. The program itself has had a good, good attendance for the program and, and we had a good number of people that went through the facility itself as well. So I thought all, overall, everything was, went well with that.
So just sign anybody else up?
We have one pending, one other one pending. And that's the only thing that I'm a little concerned about is, is that I think we need to, well, we just have to, uh, get the word out. And now I was hoping, and I haven't heard now, since we've had the open house, which was only a week ago, Friday. Uh, I haven't heard if there's been more interest shown, uh, and how the contacts have been going. Because of course that's all going to management now, not, not coming through my office anymore. So.
So as property managers, they, they will also be responsible then for all showings and tourisms and all that?
Absolutely. Yeah. 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 So. So hopefully, you know, we can, we'll get some more in there. We'll see.
From here on, from here on out, we still have a joint powers agreement for the property with the city of Hazen. Would you guys like a report? Monthly or are you?
We can rely on that guy there.
Well, not monthly, maybe quarterly, even if it's a written something to let us know how it's going. I think that'd be nice.
Thank you.
Yeah. As far as anything else, I don't really have anything else to report on, other than the fact that the, uh, Gerald's continuing to work on the projects on the hill. He's actually working on, they're going to have two of those. One of the twin homes now is, uh, they have the commoners in, the cabinets in, those kinds of things. And then he's working on getting one of the homes situated that way as well. And then once they have that taken care of, when that's done, then they'll, they're going to do, they're planning to do another grand opening.
Okay. And we'll move on to 10A. It's North Dakota DOT state aid contract.
After reviewing the funds and the different shortfalls with the state aid, state decided to reissue the funds that weren't spent in previous years. So as you can see, we get a 501 additional dollars of state aid for signing the contract.
Free money?
Free money.
Four hundred dollars administrative costs.
So I, I guess just asking your approval for another contract with them. And I'll spend their 500 bucks.
Man, knock yourself off.
Do we need, we need a motion to be that?
It's removed.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Maybe we should put the caveat, if it costs more than $500 to get it done.
Roll call.
Hiller.
Aye.
Aye. And 11A is 2017 independent audit.
We received a letter from Ralph and Merrick, who has conducted our audits for the last, independent audits for the last several years. They set the fee not to exceed $6,000. This is a hundred dollars more than last year. But they have stayed pretty consistent with their pricing for the last several years. They did also include a letter for their peer review, which is basically they need one every three years. So this is the last year they can rely on this peer review and they won't need to supply new ones. Again, it's up to you guys if you want to continue with Ralph and Merrick. Their reports are always reviewed by the state auditor's office as well and signed off on. It's a good relationship with them and they're very, very familiar with our systems, I guess, is the biggest thing.
I'm making a motion. We accept their audit proposal as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I guess didn't we get, uh, estimates like a couple of years ago of, of.
Yeah.
At one time?
I was going to say, they were, they were, they're all basically right around that same cause to do a single year audit. That was from the information that I found.
Roll call.
Hiller.
Stern.
Aye. Next, we have the Housing Authority Board appointments.
Okay, Beth Charlesy resigned her position on the board. Michael Jelson has moved away. And I didn't put it in the notes to you, but Mr. McCarthy's term is actually up this month as well. He has graciously agreed to do another term if you wish to appoint him. Uh, Greg did contact Troy Johnson and Christie Cleaver Keller. They are both willing and interested in serving on the board to replace those other two positions. Troy Johnson.
Troy Johnson has taken over for Delmer Shrem. He's received this Harlem's plus service. I mean, he's back in town full time and has been interested in the project.
And we do need a motion on that?
Yes, you would need a motion to make those appointments and then we'll give them the certificate and appointment.
Move to approve the appointments.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Are the terms, those are rotating, right?
Yes.
So they'll, will one be assigned a certain, like each one will get a certain.
They'll be sta, they'll just take over the other terms and be staggered. Yeah. So there will be an appointment to that board every year.
So they'll finish out, they'll finish out the terms of the incumbents?
Yes.
That, that have vacated?
Yes.
Where he gets to.
Gets to go for a whole five years.
Late for their term, is that it? Yeah. Okay. Who gets along?
Actually, I just drew them.
Oh, okay.
Christie's gets the one-year term, one-year unexpired term and Troy has a three-year unexpired term.
And then normal, it is a three-year or a five-year?
Five.
Okay. Thank you.
And then is this the same board that's going to be in charge of the?
Yeah, basically. The Hazen Pioneer Apartments Board is the Housing Authority Board, yes.
And who's the other two?
The other two still serving are Austin Claris and Delmer Shrem.
Roll call.
Stern.
Aye.
Hiller.
Aye.
Motion carried. On to approval of the bills.
Throw that waiver today.
Move to approve the bill.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Stern.
Aye.
If there's nothing else, meeting adjourned.